Okay, I'm connected now. I have, how do I put me on speaker? Speaker. How do I know that's on speaker? I'm afraid I don't know. Think I'm on speaker, I'm stuck like this. Am I stuck like that? Okay. We'll see if anybody else, because I haven't heard somebody. Waiting for others to join. Okay. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. I will have it. Gary's there. Gary, are you there? Hello? Hey, how do I know, can I have speaker? It looks like Gary's there. Oh, he's on a headset. Gary, can you hear me? Gary, can you hear me? It looks like he's on, but how do I get him? Hello? Why can't I hear anybody? Oh, this is gonna be fun. Justin and he left. Oh, hi Bob.
Hi Bob.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
This is so weird.
I know. So, do you see, do you see anything, do you see Gary as signed on?
Oh, I see the big L.S. on my screen, which is you.
That's me. I'm showing Gary, but I can't hear him.
I see Gary, his microphone's muted.
I'm gonna...
The thing on mine that says use computer for audio.
It says what?
Use computer for audio, or you could dial in.
Right, you're on the computer, obviously. I had to dial in, because I don't have mic or webcam on my computer at work. But I see Gary has signed in.
Definitely signed in, I see that.
But I don't see or hear him.
I click out his name and nothing happens. There he is.
Oh, there he is.
Still can't hear him, though.
Can't hear him. Looks like he's talking.
Still showing the microphone muted on this.
Gary, can you hear us? Can you hear me? I can't hear you. I don't know either. You'll have to use sign language. He's trying. Are we having fun yet?
Fantastic, this needs to be over.
Still can't hear you, Bob's on too, do you see Bob? Bob can't hear you either.
There isn't, there isn't audio button up top, I don't know if that helps. On the top of the screen?
I don't know. Did I lose Bob, Bob, you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, no, I can hear, okay. I don't know, I still can't hear you, Gary.
Uh, this is Steve Jeskowitz on the line, Lisa, are you already online?
Uh, yes, Steve, I'm here.
Okay, um...
Bob is here, Bob is on video, I can't hear Bob. Gary's on video, but we can't hear him.
Okay.
I know.
Why don't you, why don't you hold up a sign for Gary, uh, for Gary to say just dial in on the phone?
I, he can hear me, Gary.
But we can't hear him both.
Can you hear Steve? Okay, why don't you try calling in, Gary, on the phone? I guess he can hear us, we can't hear him.
Yeah, we'll need to hear him in order, you know, I don't care about his face, uh, smiling, I just care about his voice.
He was already holding up signs for me.
That's funny.
So I just have, so far, I just have you, Bob, and Gary.
Okay, uh, we need, um, uh, one more for forum.
Oh.
We're still two, two minutes early.
Yep.
Also, that change order that I sent you, Lisa, I realized, that's not the change order I thought it was, that's one we'll have at our next meeting. Um, the, uh, that's the one for the safe room, that, we'll have that on next Monday.
Right, yeah, I can't do that tonight.
All right, and these ads...
Hello?
Who's that, Jerry?
Jerry, yes.
Okay. All right, we got Jerry.
Can you still hear me too?
I can hear somebody.
Okay.
Hey, this is Mike Brennan, just signed on.
Hi Mike.
Oh, Mike?
Hi Mike.
Yep. Hey guys.
Okay. This is gonna be fun.
Mike, we're gonna actually vote on that change order you sent me on the safe room on, uh, next Monday. Um, but, uh, only because it, I thought it was, we could add to the agenda, not add it, but it was covered on the agenda, but it's, I'd rather just push it to Monday. In a week. If, if that's not gonna cause, I mean, I understand, we're, we're not gonna have anyone in these rooms for the next five months, anyway.
This was, this was for the, uh, the fencing outside, um, Steve.
Oh, and, okay.
Oh, that's on there.
All right, Mike, so, did you see that the, uh, the dollar value is wrong in the Gallipill change order request?
Yeah, but, what, what's posted on the, um, what's posted in the, in, in the agenda is the backup, and the cover sheet is missing. So, what I, what I emailed you last night was, was the entirety, including the cover page.
Okay, I will, uh, open that up now, hang on a second, I, I confused which one you sent me.
All right.
It's for the, uh, the owner requested fencing.
Why isn't this working?
I can see you here.
Yeah, you can see me, you can't hear me.
No, I can hear you too, and I can see you.
Gary? Really, Mimi?
Am I vocal now?
Yep, I can hear Gary.
Hey, I don't know what I did, but it sounds like a plan.
All right, we got you now.
Lisa, can you hear me?
Who's that?
Can you hear me, Jerry?
I can hear Jerry, yes.
Okay.
And I got Bob, Bob's still there. Actually, Bob, what happened to you?
I don't know where my cam, I'm, I'm here, but I don't know where my camera went.
Oh, okay, all right, as long as you're still there, because I don't have you on camera anymore.
As long as you can hear my voice, we're good.
That's all we need.
You don't wanna see me anyways.
Okay, uh, it's five o'clock, so, uh, Lisa, you would just go, uh, through a, uh, who do you think is online, and we'll confirm that. And we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll start, I'll do that as the roll call, so, it's, uh, 5:03 PM on Monday, March 30th. This is a remote meeting of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for the Town of Bledyard. My name is Steven Jeskowitz, I am the chairman. Um, I'll ask each of you, um, uh, now, when we do the roll call, to state your full name, um, your organization for the record. And, uh, this is our first time doing this, and, um, this is a special meeting, uh, in a sense, because of the, uh, the date. Uh, in our regular meetings, uh, like, a week from today, uh, we'll be able to amend the agenda and things than we normally would. So with that, I'll start with the roll call, and, uh, just don't talk over each other, please, go ahead.
This is Jerry Tominski, member?
Bob Guerrier, Board of Ed.
Wayne Donaldson.
Gary Schneider, member.
Okay, so I don't have Kate, or Peter, or Stephen, Settlerworth.
Okay, we have seven members, so we have four members online, so that is a quorum. Uh, the quorum consisting of Gary, Jerry, Bob, and myself. Uh, we have Mike Brennan and Wayne online as well. Okay, the purpose, uh, I think, I think we're good. Um, the, uh, I don't have the two March minutes actually attached here, I know you, you send them out. So, uh, Lisa, what I'd like to do is just push approval of the March 2nd minutes to our, uh, regular meeting.
Those I didn't resend, Steve, because I had sent those, no, wait a minute. The last one, the March 2nd?
Yeah.
Did anybody get the March 2nd meeting, minutes?
I don't, I don't remember getting them, but maybe you did send them.
I got them.
So with that, we'll, we'll just move that to, uh, the next meeting, that'd be fine.
Okay, okay.
All right, so the purpose for today's meeting is to pay some bills, and specifically, I called the, I called this meeting for two reasons. One, to make sure that we could get the bugs worked out of a virtual meeting, uh, as soon as possible, so we can move forward. And we have something time critical, and we could do that. The second reason for, uh, this meeting is, uh, to be able to pay the contractor for the track and field project. You know, as we know, the finance is getting tight for companies, uh, they've got some bills out there, they're, they're pretty small companies, we wanna make sure we can get those paid, um, and, uh, and move forward. And we now have, uh, actually, uh, three invoices, uh, for them to pay. So, uh, with that, um, what I'd like to do is, I just go ahead and go through, um, a couple of items that we have on the agenda. The, uh, the first item, I'm not gonna do the standard, where are we with projects and things? Everybody knows the schools are closed. Um, I will, at the end of this, uh, paying some bills, let Mike Brennan talk, and Wayne talk about what work can be still done in the schools under this condition, and, um, and I'm not gonna use the words take advantage of this time, but this is an opportunity with no kids in the school, where we can get some things done, um, that we would normally have to have the kids out of the school for. So, and I also wanna talk to you at the end about finances, I, I was able to reconcile all the financials for the project, uh, and, uh, went through that. We're actually in pretty good shape, with the exception of bar, borrowing and bonding costs, which are significantly higher than we expected, but we'll talk about those at the end. So, uh, with that, the first item on the agenda is change orders. Um, change order thirty-four is for additional fences, gates, and perimeter sidewalks. Um, Wayne, did you wanna just talk about why you asked for this, uh, change order request, real quick?
Sure. Basically, um, there's, there's three different parts to this. The first is the retention pond, which can get up to about five feet deep, I'm told, uh, during heavy rains. The fencing is six foot high, except for about fifty feet that goes along the, uh, rec department field there. Um, so I'm looking to bring that up to the same six feet to, um, fully enclose the retention pond. Um, the second is, if you remember, we were looking for a, um, some kind of latch on the gate, going to, um, out of the youth playground, the preschool playground. Because we had kids, we're opening the gate and running out. Um, and that cost was about, I think, eight thousand dollars. So, what we looked at, instead of doing that, was to put a gate, um, across from the playground to the, um, to the building. Uh, would leave still, uh, a larger, be a walk gate, plus a drive-through gate, so we can still get around to the back. And then also close off the back of the property with the same thing, a drive-through and a walk gate, so that we can lock it up from the neighbors during the school day. We'd still open it up, so they would have, take the lock off, so they would have access during the, uh, after-school hours, summer.
Okay. Uh, now, the change order that actually Mike Brennan sent me later today, uh, the one that you're looking at there is, as Mike said at the beginning of the call, is the backup. Uh, at fifteen thousand, four fifty-seven seventy-one, there's additional cost to that C.M. fee and an O.N.G. fee, that brings that to sixteen, seven thirty-eight seventy-one. So it's the same change order, same thing, but it, uh, was just not complete there. So the dollar value is sixteen, seven thirty-eight seventy-one. But there's also a comment on here, about an additional hundred feet of six-foot-high fence at Ball Field. Um, what are we talking about there, Wayne?
Basically, the, um, contractor felt that he should run the fence all the way down past the retention pond, that entire strip. Um, I don't really see any need for it. It's definitely nothing that went on with the school project. Um, and, you know, he just wants to reset the poles, when the fifty feet, or sixty feet, whatever it is that I'm looking for, he's just gonna sleeve over the existing poles, and then replace the four-foot fence with a six-foot.
All right, so this, where is, this ad alternate here for thirty-four hundred and seventy-four dollars? What is, uh, so you're saying we don't need that?
I don't think so, it's, it's, it's purely rec department fencing. Uh, it only borders the rec department field from a, uh, like a wooded area. Um, I don't see any reason that there's an existing four-foot fence.
Okay, and this has nothing to do with the safety of the retention pond, right?
No, not at all.
Okay. So with that, the amount of the change order, as I said, is, uh, without taking that ad alternate, so we would decline that, is sixteen, seven thirty-eight seventy-one. The change order numbers and everything remain the same. Uh, so with that, I, I, I move that we, uh, accept the change order request number thirty-four for the amount of sixteen, seven thirty-eight seventy-one. And Lisa, I, or, and, uh, I will, uh, sign these, uh, after we vote on them, uh, at some point in the future here, if I can scan them. So that motion is made.
Second.
I'll second.
Uh, is that you, Jerry?
Yeah.
All right, Jerry Tominski has seconded, uh, with that, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of approving the change order, signify by saying your name, uh, Steve Jeskowitz.
Jerry Tominski.
Jerry Schneider.
And, uh, Jerry, you there, did you vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay, uh, with that, the, uh, motion carries. All right, uh, I'm gonna move on now, we've got a couple of, uh, AIA applications here, uh, the first is from Adtech. Um, so Lisa, we've gone round and round with Adtech, um, this one now has been on the right form, signed by D'Agostino, signed by Adtech, and I think it's in order. It's an amount of sixty-one thousand, three dollars and thirty-eight cents, am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, uh, is there, uh...
Is this...
At this point here, go ahead.
Do we still owe, is there another invoice still rolling around out there for these guys?
Uh, yes, there is going to be, because there's still ninety-five hundred and forty-eight dollars out there, uh, left.
Okay.
For Adtech. And this is on, uh, Gallipill School. So, uh, so with that, um, I move that, uh, that we authorize payment to Adtech for AIA application number two, uh, dated five, March, twenty-twenty, in the amount of sixty-one thousand, three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
I'm gonna...
Okay, it's been seconded, um, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, uh, signify, uh, state your name, uh, to vote aye, uh, Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Uh, Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerrier, aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, all right, next up, uh, we have two CDW, uh, one for Gallipill, and one for Bledyard Middle School. CDW is one of our major providers for, uh, tell data equipment. Uh, the CDW application has been, I guess my question on this one, Lisa, is, uh, we have not, have you seen a signed copy? Oh, never mind, it's on the second page.
Okay, so what happened, what happened with this, and Marcia and I have been round and round, um, with emails. Um, so we have a signed from CDW, and then we have a signed AIA, um, Mark D'Agostino, um, signed it. We do not have both signatures on one AIA sheet, but at this point, when I spoke with Marcia, she said to go ahead, um, and approve it. The other issue with CDW is, um, since these two are not, have not been paid, Regina here, our MIS, um, she tried to put in an order last week with, for webcams and microphones for the staff, for our computers to do the web conferencing meetings now, and they refused to fill her order, because these have not been paid. Um, so Marcia said to go ahead, since we do have the signatures, they're not on the same page, but Marcia said to go ahead.
Yeah, they're for the same, I was gonna comment, they're, they're the same ones, so, uh, with that, we should be good to go. Um, and, uh, what we have here is CDW invoice application number one for Bledyard Middle School, dated twenty-seven February, twenty-twenty, in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. That is in order, as just discussed, um, so with that, uh, I move that we authorize payment to CDW.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Jerry Tominski, is there any discussion? If there is none, please signify by stating your name and aye that you vote, uh, in the affirmative. Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerrier, aye.
Okay, with that, the motion carries. All right, moving on, we have a second CDW, similar, uh, same situation here. Uh, this is for the, uh, Gallipill School. And, uh, it is in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. Uh, also dated twenty-seven February, twenty-twenty, again, for Gallipill School for CDW. And I move that we authorize payment to CDW. In both these invoices, by the way, there's still remaining money. So, motion's on the floor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry Tominski, is there any discussion on this invoice? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and aye, Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerrier, aye.
With that, we have four ayes, motion carries. Okay, moving on, I have two Silver Petrocelli and Associates invoices. Keep in mind, STA is now working on time materials for us, so if you look at their invoice, you'll see the actual breakdown of who worked how many hours, and what we're being charged. That appears to be in order. First is, uh, application number twenty-dash-three-eight-six for Silver Petrocelli, dated one, March, twenty-twenty, the amount of five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, that's for the Gallipill School. The invoice, uh, is in order, and I move we authorize payment.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski, uh, is there any discussion on the AIA application for Silver Petrocelli for Gallipill School? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, signify by saying your name and aye, Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Uh, Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerrier, aye.
All right, with that, the motion carries. Moving on, motion, uh, for application number two-zero-Tac four-hundred for Silver Petrocelli and Associates, Architectural Services for Bledyard Middle School, in the amount of six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. That invoice is in order, and I move we approve payment.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tominski, is there any discussion? If there is none, please state your name, signify by saying aye, uh, voting in the affirmative, Steve Jeskowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerrier, aye.
Hey, with that, motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, we have, uh, a couple of invoices here for the track and field project, then I'll roll back, I'm gonna pay all the invoices, then we'll roll back into the discussion about, um, the, uh, what work is being done here, and, uh, the, uh, the project here. We will be voting on anything or anything on that. Uh, so we have three invoices here for the track and field project, um, and when we started putting this meeting together, we only had two, so there's a third one that's now been added. Um, and those invoices, um, if you look at them, the architect has signed those, uh, as well as the, uh, as stone. And, um, before we vote on this, I just will ask, uh, Wayne, uh, would you just chime in on the quality of work and responsiveness we've seen from Stone so far on site? we've seen from Stone so far on site?
Yes, they've been very responsive. They're well ahead on the project. Work is good. We've gotten absolutely no complaints from the school as far as their work or the timeframe of working. They've been very cooperative about, when the school told them there was testing about not working. You know, unfortunately, the most critical test of the S A Ts has been canceled now. But they were set to take the day off on the twenty fifth, but they were able to work through that. I've had no issues at all with them.
Excellent. I just let the committee know Marcia Hancock wrote checks today, but she has agreed to cut checks tomorrow to make sure Stone gets paid right away. So this money will go right to Stone, which is, which is good. So with that, I'm going to make three quick, we'll do it in succession, one, two, and three. So the first is I move that we approve application number one for H I Stone for the High School Track and Field Project. Their invoice dated twenty nine February twenty twenty, in the amount of seventy six thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second that. You want to take them all as a group, Steve?
Lisa, do we need to, can I do them all at once?
Um, sure.
Okay, with, all right.
Yeah, I can just put it in one motion. Just put it in one motion to approve all three.
Okay, I'm going to amend my motion. This will be a friendly amendment, jury, if you'll accept that. The motion is amended as follows. The motion is to approve application one in the amount of seventy six two seventy five fifty, application two in the amount of one seventy two six oh five fifty, and application three in the amount of one hundred and forty six thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents, all for payment to H I Stone and Sons for Leger High School Track and Field Project. And the motion is now amended.
I'll second that as amended.
The amended motion has been seconded by Mr. Tominski. Is there any discussion on these, this motion?
Yeah, I just one question. From the architect, are we on track now with this as far as price? Because this is pretty tight.
I don't think the architect is in, but yeah, we've had no additional costs at this point. The only potential was water issue. But we've been able to determine that there is a one inch line, we believe, is run up there. We couldn't test that today because of the, there's a bend in the valve box. So we couldn't get a wrench down there to turn it on, to make sure it's active. But we do have a one inch copper line up there, and there is a one inch tap on the curb.
Okay, so it doesn't, it looks like we're going to be on budget with this because just concern.
So far, yeah, so far, Jerry, the only thing, we talked about the water line at the last meeting, and as Wayne just stated, we, you know, we were looking at that well field that was feeding that, but then we went and found that there was actually a water line run there at some point in the past. So that's good news. The other thing that only came up is there was a shed, so to speak, that was in, on the site that was in bad shape. Rather than go through a change order on this, what we did was Wayne called me and said, hey, I said, hey, this is, can we just take care of this? And they called the Public Works. Public Works came over with the equipment, coordinated with Board of Ed personnel, and for the cost of a dumpster, we were able to get rid of it. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yep, that's correct.
So we saved a bunch of money there. Cost of a dumpster is nothing.
Yeah, a couple hundred bucks.
All right, so with that, the motion is on the floor. Is there any further discussion on approving invoice applications one, two, and three? Hearing none, I move for a vote. All in favor of approving the motion? Start with myself, Steve Justkowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerera, aye.
Sorry, somebody just said something?
Yes, Pete McIntyre is present, if you hear me, Steve.
Okay, Pete's online. Pete, did you hear the motion?
Yeah, I heard the motion, I say aye.
All right, so we, please let the agenda show that Pete McIntyre is on board, and we have five votes in the affirmative.
I've been here for a while, Steve, but I didn't know what to do.
Okay, not a problem. Good to hear you, and I'm glad you're, you're safe. All right, so last item here to vote on before we have a discussion on a few things is, on the Leger High School Tunnel Asbestos Removal Project, we came up short. We didn't have enough money to be able to do the work, based on the money that was allocated by the council to us. The bids all came in high on that. However, and we'll have a full discussion on that in the future, on a future meeting. I asked at our next meeting, Wayne, what our path forward is on that. But for right now, we do have a bill to pay the Hartford Current for the legal notice for the bid we did get. So with that, we have a motion to approve a Hartford Current invoice, invoice zero one five seven six six nine five two zero zero zero, in the amount of three hundred and forty three dollars and sixty cents. And I move that we approve that invoice.
I'll second.
Pete McIntyre, aye.
All right, so it's been seconded by Jerry Tominski. Pete McIntyre has voted, is there any discussion? If none, Pete McIntyre has voted aye. Steve Justkowitz, aye.
Jerry Tominski, aye.
Gary Schneider, aye.
Bob Guerera, aye.
All right, with that, the motion carries. All righty, just a couple of quick items. The, just to let you know, the safe room, we're going to vote on it at the next meeting. The invoice came in for that at about sixty three thousand dollars. Is that, I want to go back to that number. Do you have that in front of you? Or did I have that short?
No, that was sixty three plus the eighteen that I had in the estimate. It's, it's about eighty, eighty, eighty five thousand. The only price I'm missing right now is the electrical portion. But the biggest, the biggest portion of that is the wall and floor treatments.
All right, so just everyone, I just let you know, we did talk about this at the meeting where we had some of the faculty, or the staff come in and talk to us, I think it was Director of Student Services, if I remember correctly, it was her title. And just quickly, I want to let everybody, I was able to get the rest of the, and I'll have this to everyone in copies for our next meeting. But I did want to let you know that I was able to get all up-to-date financials back from Marcia Hancock, and I re-reconciled the entire project, going all the way back to the first expenditures. And there was a couple little things where something was charged to the wrong school project along the way. We'll sort all those little things out, but in the end, there's still dollars to the town. So as we look at the two school projects as to where they stand, I did want to let you know, there was a lot of discussion, I think, Jerry, you brought up at the last one, was, hey, where do we stand with soft costs and things like that? And one of the things I want to show is that our soft cost numbers actually are lower than the numbers we were carrying in some cases. But that's with one exception. And that's a big exception in the cost for financing and bonding. One of the things that we found out along the way was that the, you just back up a little bit a minute. One of the, one of the things we found along the way was that the original estimate for the cost for the financing and the bonding that we would pay out of the project before it went to long term was going to be approximately six hundred thousand dollars. We're actually going to wind up seeing costs that are probably close to two million dollars in total financed and bond costs because of a couple of things. Number one, the projects took longer than originally planned. And number two, the biggest reason is because the state made a change after we started the project that they now hold eleven percent of the money back until the final audit is complete and the project is closed. What that basically means is that we are going to be carrying some of those costs in this project, eating into the money that, you know, we were about two million dollars under budget still, and we're continuing that even with all the stuff that we expected to see. However, we're going to see a good portion of that being eaten up by, by short-term debt costs. And I had a discussion with the finance director today. She had not been sharing any of those numbers with me. And I was tracking all of the other numbers, everything across our, our soft costs. But it looks to me like a good, a good portion of those money we didn't spend is actually going to wind up going to bonding and interest. Now, I believe that those are all reimbursable expenses, and I'm out to verify that. And if anyone knows more on that, please pass that on now. But I've got several feelers out to verify that those are, in fact, project costs that are fully, what was I going to look for here, are fully eligible for reimbursement by the state.
Steve, I just got, well, a couple of questions on that. If I understand this correctly, we're going to wipe out the full two million dollars of surplus we thought we had because of these bond costs. Now, what would have happened to us if she didn't report these to us quicker and we were over on this project by two million dollars?
In that particular, well, a couple of things. Number one, more of that money would have gone back toward, I did have that discussion with Marcia Hancock today. First of all, some of that money is going to come back to us from the state anyway. But the, the, the fact is that that could have been a real problem for us. And those interest payments, she's going to give me some numbers in the next couple of days, and we'll ask for the interest payments. But I had a big discussion with her about when we're bonding, when we can bond, and the amount we need to bond. But all these extra interest expenses are going to go into the bond, subject to whatever the state doesn't reimburse us for. And there's really no way around that. In fact, when the state changed the rules for reimbursement and said we're going to hold back instead of five percent, eleven percent, that meant that we were going to have to carry about two to three million dollars more debt for, now, thank God, when they changed the legislation, they also said that we have the ability to do our own audit after so many months. Because Mike Brennan, if you'll chime in on this, how long do we often see before the state releases that last percent on projects prior to the change?
Years, Steve. I mean, it could be three, four, or five years before you'll get your final check. That's how long, that's how far they're behind in auditing.
Okay, let me ask, is, are the dollars that she's telling us that we have to bond with whatever interest rate is out there now, the additional, additional percentage? If I get the question right. If that money has to sit there for two or three more years, is she factored in that additional interest cost that we're going to incur on this project, and where do we get the money for?
Well, what, what she's actually doing is she is going to sit down with me and some others in town hall here in the next week or two, and we're going to determine the end state cost of the project, including all these finance costs, so they can do an additional bond. And then we're going to figure out the best path forward for the town uncovering those short-term bond costs. Luckily, we're only paying about two percent interest on the short-term debt right now. I did ask about, we have twenty one million dollars that has already bonded on this. And one of the things I found out was that if you know anything about how bonds work is, they float the bond process, and then if somebody goes and bids on it, you can wind up getting a rebate. And my understanding is that there was a two million dollar rebate they got on the original finance, the twenty one million dollars of bonding that went out. And out of that money, part of that went to the track and field project, and part of it went into the mill rate stabilization fund. So it went into the town's general budget. So granted, it's future town money we're paying more for because we have that money now, if that makes any sense. But the, something to keep in mind is that how all this bonding works and the costs associated with that is a very complicated process, and it is outside the power of the building committee to do anything about it.
No, I agree with that, Steve, but just we're not going to fortunate that we weren't like the track and field thing, going to scrape by on a nickel, and all of a sudden we found out there's two million dollars worth of nickels floating around. We had no idea it was there.
Right, and when we look at where we thought we were going to be about three million under, and we wind up about two million under, but not looking at this extra bond expense and costing of financing. I hate to say bond expense, but I'm really talking about, some of it's bond expense, but a good portion of it is actually short-term borrowing or bands. But where we actually wound up, we spent a lot less money, and I'll show you all these numbers at our next meeting, but we spent a lot less money on things like utilities and, you know, we didn't pay some salaries we thought we were going to have to pay and things. Some things cost us a lot more than we expected. For example, moving and storage cost a lot more than we expected. But other things came in way under, and some of our special inspections and hazmat and stuff came in under the budget. And what we did find is that other million dollars went to buy all the things that came up in the project over the last year. And that also included the, you know, the fix in the parking lot, the two outbuildings. I could go down the list, all the kitchen equipment that wasn't originally included, an awful lot of stuff that we put in to the projects to improve things. And the numbers I'm running right now do include, I asked Mike Brennan to provide me a list of everything that he knows that's out there that we've requested or is in the process of being done. And I've already rolled those into the budget, plus a ten percent contingency on all of those things. So I think we've got some pretty good numbers moving forward. And I'll share these in more detail with a spreadsheet for our next meeting. I just finished it up over the weekend.
Okay, one more, just one final question on that one, Steve. So if, and Mike, you can chime in. When this is finally audited by the state, and, and we get to the final dollar amount that they agree upon, these extra bond costs from the five percent to the eleven percent is all reimbursable back to us, is that correct?
Steve asked me to check on that today, and I want to double back with a couple other people in our office because I, I'm not sure of the answer on that, Jerry. I think they are because they're part and parcel of the project cost, or the total project cost. I think they are, but I just want to validate that.
So, no, but the interest that we are going to pay on that money for a couple of years, that's the one I'm concerned about. The principle, the principle is refundable to us. I'm just curious if the interest cost that we're going to incur is refundable to us.
Yeah, and I think, Jerry, we have to submit a second, another invoice, something to them afterwards because when we close, I asked Mike Brennan, and we had a discussion today on the phone for a while about, when does the project really close out, when does it end? And he says, hey, that's when the last change order's been submitted, et cetera. We pay all the bills, we're done. We submit to the state and say we're done. But keep in mind that we don't know what those final costs are going to be for, I see what you're saying, we don't know what those final finance costs are going to be because we don't know when we're going to get our money. So I did also ask Mike Brennan to check on other projects and see if anyone has gone down the path of paying for their own, their own audit or any of that stuff, and what people are seeing in reimbursement from the state. I'll have more information hopefully in a week or two on this, and we'll be able to take a look at it. But Jerry, unfortunately, when the state made that change, they incurred additional costs. Whether that's reimbursable or not, we'll find out. But the thing that really bothers me is, hey, we only get reimbursed sixty two point eight six percent on allowable costs. We still paying forty percent of that extra interest. And I asked Marcia about just bonding it all now, just get it over with and get it out there. But she did explain to me that we're not allowed to bond more than the expense because that's illegal. So we got to balance that, you know, as closely as we can. And we'll learn more about that at a future meeting.
Okay, because there can be a considerable chunk of change here in interest costs.
Oh, yeah, because one of the things that, you know, we, I see all the expenses when we pay all the bills. And I knew there were some, you know, some little tiny things like some utility bills that we were still seeing that we didn't vote on in committee because we voted those en masse. But what I did not know is huge amounts of bonding and finance costs that were being applied to the project until I got my last dump from her, because they kind of, they don't show up in either of the project space, they show up separate. And that's when I realized how much money that was. So, you know, we've done good due diligence on our part. And again, Jerry, there's nothing we can do on the finance side of having that money available. If the, if the town had an extra ten million in the bank, we wouldn't have to borrow it. But needless to say, that's just not the case.
Yeah, yeah, we should have been accruing some dollars for it. That, I just would like to know if we're going to get our, the interest back, that's all. See if you can find out.
We'll find out. All right, so with that, just real quickly, Wayne, if you could just talk about the, the status of the schools. We're going to talk, by the way, about all the items that are still out there in our next meeting. And I'll have an offline with Wayne between now and then to make sure we're all the same sheet of music on what we think is still being done. So I just asked Wayne just real quickly to talk about the status of the buildings right now and any limitations on work being done. I would have argued that probably since construction is considered to be, you know, a political thing by the state, that it's legal to do it. But as Mike Brennan will follow up, Wayne, he said there could be a. he said there could be a problem with getting people to actually perform during this timeframe. So Wayne, why don't you start first, then Mike follow up?
Okay, uh, basically, uh, we've opened the building to Mike, uh, ONG, for whatever work that can get done. Uh, there's no restrictions. Just let us know. We'll make sure that the buildings are open or they have access.
And that, and, and that's been occurring. We've had, we've, we've been down there getting quotes. We walked the other day and you got the, um, the, uh, quote this morning. I think I, I sent that through to you for the, all the, uh, smoke, uh, all the revisions to the smoke doors. I walked the building last week with the fire marshal and the subcontractors and Wayne. So now that, now that we sort of got free rein, I'm, I'm able to get in there during the day and, and get things done. The painter was there last week finishing up items. I hope to have the handicap, uh, quote for those doors, cause I got those guys on site a couple times and that's being done. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping to get a lot of these large items off the table and onto you guys within the next week or so. In fact, while you guys were talking, I just sent the, the fencing guy an email, so it's not like we're gonna sit on this stuff. I wanna keep moving this stuff forward.
Okay, with that, what I think we'll do is at our next meeting, which is one week from today, we will, uh, vote on as many things as we can or give you thumbs up to proceed so that we can, um, get things ordered and get things moving. My, uh, based on the, uh, what came out from the president, uh, with respect to, you know, four more weeks at least to shelter in place, I have a feeling that, uh, we're probably not gonna see school back in session this year, although that's not firm. But, um, uh, things just aren't looking really good to get the kids back into the school at this point. And Wayne, do you know anything more on that?
Uh, no, but that's the general feeling is, uh, you're correct. But until we get some, uh, definite direction from the governor or the Commissioner of Education, we're in a holding pattern.
Let me, I have a, a general question. I guess it's for Wayne and Mike. Since we're, since we're in the buildings now after school has been out, do we have to somehow clean those buildings? Because people have been in there in access before we turn them back over to the school, because of this virus? I, I mean, it's a general question. I don't know the answer. But is there anything we have to do? Because we're doing work in there now and we may have contaminated the buildings.
Um, that's gonna depend on the timeframe. If they're working in there and we open the school four days later, and yeah, I would send my guys in to sanitize the area that they worked in. But so far, everything they're telling us, except for very few types of material, usually it's 72 hours, this virus is dead on the surfaces.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Type surfaces, yep.
And I just, I just wanna make sure we don't run into a problem.
Okay, with that, uh, again, this was kind of a special meeting to pay some bills. Uh, Lisa, did we take care of everything we need to take care of?
Uh, yes, we did. I do have a question. Steve, I, uh, excuse me, I do have a question regarding the, um, the change in the dollar amount of the change order for the fencing.
Right.
Do you or Mike, does anybody have anything with that $16 figure, $16,000 figure on it?
I do. I'm gonna forward that to you, uh, electronically here in a minute. I just sent you the wrong one earlier today. I meant to send you that one.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I'll send that to you and, uh, I will print all these out and sign them here, uh, at the time that works to meet. I'll either mail them to you, Lisa, or we'll figure it out.
Okay, because of the, um, the special check run, Marcia said to just give her the invoices tomorrow morning and, you know, she'll go ahead and get the, as long as it's in the minutes that you guys approve them, so we can get these going before I have the signatures.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm sending you the updated fence quote right now as we speak. Um, and then you'll have that for, um, uh, to be able to pay, or actually, that's not being paid, that's, um,
No, that's a change order.
That's change order. So that just went to you. We should be good to go. So with that, is there anyone else has anything for the, uh, for the meeting today? If not, um, we're good and, uh, I will, uh, follow up, uh, with, uh, those I discussed, uh, between now and our next meeting.
Okay, and we are having a meeting again next Monday? Yes?
On the 6th, on the 6th, uh, we'll have, uh, another virtual meeting.
On the 6th, having another meeting, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody. Stay safe.
Okay. Ciao.